The last one you'll ever do.
No, I'm, yeah. The others in the room now with the one house. That's the last transition room.
Good to see.
The Chair will call the October 4th, 2022 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Folgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman D'Senzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donneling.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, our quorum is present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call forward Kathleen Alcor and the Deputy Mayor and introduce the Mayor's Youth Council for this year, or some of them, actually.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you see, we have five amazing students here. The rest are held up with sports, so love that motivation. We're lucky this year because I appreciate this wonderful add-on. We have Molly Burns, who's with the library this year, and she is assisting us this year with the Mayor's Youth Council. I hope she stays on for every year moving forward, so I will let Molly introduce herself. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Molly Burns. I am the Youth Services Manager over at Lincoln Library. Just started in July, coming into libraries from the education world, so it's fun to still be able to work with students, even though I'm not in the classroom anymore. Turn things over to our President.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Andrew Rikerom. I am a senior at Sacred Heart Griffin, and I'm the President of the Mayor's Youth Council this year. I'd like to begin by saying a mission statement that we made for this year, that being to create a diverse group of high schoolers in and around the Springfield area who are committed in uniting and aiding their community. Speaking from personal experience, and I think speaking for everybody who was on the Youth Council last year, I consider it to be super invaluable, and I'm really proud of what we were able to do, specifically the hygiene drive that we did. And going forward, I would love to do more things like that. Specifically, we're actually planning a cleanup event downtown right now. We want to get like a big group of kids together from all of the Springfield area high schools and kind of clean up a section of downtown and show what the love it deserves. And other than that, we kind of just want to do events that will get the kids together and kind of break down the barriers that kind of exist between the high schools. It's going to be a really exciting year. I'd like to introduce our Vice President now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Callidora Leopakis. I am the Vice President for the Mayor's Youth Council. I'm a junior at New Berlin High School, and the reason I'm on the Mayor's Youth Council is because I want to better my community.
I would like to point out that Kelly's dad and sister is here to support her as well.
Well, I'm here to support Andrew. He used to be my next door neighbor. Yes, he was.
Oh, wow. Congratulations. Smile bigger.
I technically haven't had a homecoming yet, so I can't really stand up, Andrew. Hi, guys. My name is Rohan Ramkumar. I am a senior at Springfield High School, and I joined the Mayor's Youth Council to hopefully leaving lasting, hopefully leave a lasting impact on the youth in our community. Hoping to pursue engineering in college and, yeah.
Come to Ida. I have to add that Rohan has a black belt in martial arts and did not tell me that while I waited with him for his parents to pick him up outside of the library.
Hi, my name is Jake Pironimus. I'm a senior at New Berlin High School. I hope to major in accounting at UIS. I join the Mayor's Youth Council mainly to better promote myself with the community and hopefully learn more to promote myself.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Turner. I'm a freshman at Springfield High School, and I'm here to make new friends and just help my community to be better.
Thank you. So Katie's brother is here in the audience as well. Isaac does a lot with real estate and development, as I cannot believe how young Isaac is and the work he has accomplished so far. So we have a wonderful group. We're so proud to have you here, and you have a whole support team here for your endeavors this year, so thank you for being here.
And then Terrence Jordan is the coordinator on the School District 186 side, and I believe there's representatives from all the high schools. Is that correct? Very good. But appreciate you taking the time to introduce yourselves, and I'm sure we'll have the others up at some point in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, we have representatives from Springfield J.C.'s, I believe, to give a recap of the Capital City Celebration.
Hello, everyone. Hi.
Hi.
All right. We'll get right into it, because I know you've probably got a jam-packed agenda.
State your name if, for the record. That'd be great.
Absolutely. My name is Ellen Thorson. I'm the President of the Springfield J.C.'s.
And my name is Emily Watts. I'm the Community Vice President of the Springfield J.C.'s.
We're going to keep this light and tight. We're going to go through a celebration summary, some top highlights, some learning opportunities for us, and then a look ahead to Capital City Celebration 23. All right, so Saturday for the Fourth of July Celebration, we did have that large kids area with activities for all agents. We were able to throw a patriotic dog pageant. We also were able to showcase some Lincoln Library programming and show other programming happening in downtown Springfield. Before this, we also made a list of literally everything that was going on in Fourth of July weekend, and we sent that out to area hotels so that visitors could be aware of all of the great things we have to offer in Springfield over Fourth of July. We also had a movie on North Mansion Block and a variety of local entertainment, along with food, drink, and local vendors. And then on Sunday, we again had that large kids area, vendors. We also had a lot of local dance teams, local musicians, and then we had some larger entertainment acts with Shenanigans as our headliner. And then we ended in a huge fireworks show. We had very large crowds in the evening, which we were very excited about. We filled the entire North Mansion Block, and we also filled several streets around the Capitol area. The top highlights for us when we were evaluating how we did, we had extremely generous sponsors who came together in very short notice to help bring the event to life, and we are so grateful. We are especially grateful to the City Council and to the Visitors Bureau for the grant sponsorship of our event. Without it, we would not have been able to revitalize Capital City Celebration, so huge thank you to you all for that. We were able to provide free children's activities. That's a staple of our event. We are very family-friendly with this event. We were able to create rebranding. We did have vendors who had long lines and some sold out of merchandise, so that's great for our local vendors. We also had vendors who could not attend, who have reached out to us for 2023 already. Sunday evening, we had, again, thousands of people and many more lining the area around the North Mansion Block, and we had generally positive feedback, like glad we came to Springfield this weekend. We did have someone say, I wish public transit came later so I could stay. That's also an opportunity for us for next year. I even had someone say, I heard Nick Cage's voice, and I had to come check it out from our movie on the Mansion Block on Saturday. So, learning opportunities. We had two months to really plan this event. The entire structure of Capital City Celebration and the way we did our motion for our members was that, you know, we wouldn't put this on if we didn't have that grant fund. So we kind of planned within a two-month timeframe, which is pretty tight for a large citywide event. We are going to use our additional time in 2023 to diversify our marketing efforts. We feel like that could be stronger, and share our partnership opportunities earlier so that we can look at new ways that we can support local and have local come and support the event. We also know now to prepare for last-minute vendor cancellations. I would say a vast majority of our vendors either canceled the night before or day of, so we would want to get that out earlier and have more checkpoints in place for those vendor cancellations that can occur for sure, but we want to make sure that we have more vendors there. We also learned the cost associated with our food competitions can be very high, so though we had originally planned on doing a barbecue competition or a horseshoe competition, the prize money involved and the overall stipulations with it was just not something that we could complete in a two-month timeframe, but it's something to look at moving forward. We'd also like to integrate more unique ways to give back to the community. We were able to give back to the Animal Protective League's Food Assistance Program, and we have a check presentation coming up for that, but we'd like to look at other community organizations that could benefit in unique ways that we could fundraise for them through our event. Looking ahead, opportunities for growth here. We've, we're planning on starting our committees in November of 2022. We really want to expand on Plan Development Objective Three of the grant proposal that you saw at the beginning of the year, or in March or so. Really, what we wanted to bring was unique experiences, and of all the different objectives we had, that's where we felt like we could do stronger. So we're looking at ways to maybe include instructor-led dance in the evenings, patriotic kids pageant, and bring that Fourth of July parade back. We want to focus on parade entries in February 2023. One of the things that we found whenever we reached out to our parade participants, as you may know, we put on holiday lights parades, so we're, we know how to put on a parade, but no one had ever done a Fourth of July parade, so it's hard to get afloat together. And the amount of time that we had to get that information out was not enough this year, but we want to bring it back for next year. We're also going to focus the event to start in the early evenings rather than the afternoons. We found greater attendance in the evenings. It'll help with our bandwidth, but it'll also help bring people out in a cooler time than the Fourth of July weekend in the brightness of the day. It's a little hot outside, so we think that shouldn't take away from anything from the Capital City Celebration, but should augment it. We're also planning to expand our partnerships and increase our manpower. We're looking for transportation for locals and visitors to be improved upon. We're also looking for community partners and vendor expansion, as I said before, and offering volunteer opportunities earlier on so that we can secure the volunteers needed to put on a large event. And then last but not least, some things to look forward to in 2023. So we are going to do that Fourth of July parade. We want it. We're going to get it, so we're going to get that information out early. We'd also like to provide drone footage of that event through downtown. We think that would be amazing. We would like to expand on our kids area, make it a little larger, maybe look at different sports tournaments we could do for kids that are friendly and overall just family-friendly. We want to enhance our stage for entertainment and give opportunities for dancing, and we really want to focus on eating, learning, and shopping locals, so highlighting local vendors and community-focused organizations for not only our locals, but for visitors to Springfield. We love the patriotic dogs contest, so that will be continuing in 2023 as well, and of course, we will have fireworks. And that is it. Thank you, guys, so much. Again, this would not be possible without you, so we really appreciate you taking a leap of faith, and we look forward to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the, yeah.
Good job.
Questions or comments?
Very impressive.
Good job.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you bringing that back.
Hey, Roy.
Absolutely.
Alderman Williams.
Roy's triple.
He's pretty excited.
He got a couple of questions.
I don't know why that happened, but I use my finger instead of the mouse. No, so is it possible, or to use J.C. Park as a part of this celebration, since it's your namesake, you know, the J.C.'s, you know, if to find a way to use, it's an underutilized park, and I've been talking with the park board and other folks, but this may be a way into that for one of these functions of the many to be held at your park, you know, the park named after the J.C.'s.
That's excellent feedback. Would love to take that back to our committee. We love J.C. Park. We are actually working on putting a pollinator garden in J.C. Park currently. We just approved that with membership last meeting, so we're always looking for ways to improve J.C. Park, and we would love to look at ways that we could do that with Capital City as well, so thank you for that feedback.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, let entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the September 20th, 2022 City Council meeting. Approve the minutes. It's been moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, let entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in record of this City Council meeting.
They'll move, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair, let entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
They'll move.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair, let entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2022-256 and 2022-384 remain tabled during committee. Is there any motion on either of those? Alderwoman Purchase?
For the previous one, I wanted to make sure that you had it on the record. I was present for 2022-407, 2022-409, 2022-411, and 2022-412.
Noted.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2022-415, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by PTL Two, Inc., Doing Business as Pies Limited, located at 1710 South MacArthur Boulevard. The Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2022-415 on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is 2022-418, an ordinance ratifying fiscal year 24 health insurance premiums and the Health Benefit Summary Plan Description for the City of Springfield Active Union Participants for the Office of Human Resources. Chair, let entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2022-418 on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath and Alderman Hanauer.
Director McCarty, if you might, we've had some calls on this from some retirees saying that their premiums are doubled what the other participants are, and that was what was told to us. Could you explain that, or is there, is there any facts to that?
So the overall premiums, if you look at them, and they should be part of the packet that you've got, the overall premiums for retirees are larger than employees, active employees. It's always been like that, that they're quite a bit larger. The increase that we talked about last week is what I was referring to. Everybody had just a 1% increase over existing premiums for this year.
So why is the, why is their premiums so much higher? Because they're...
Well, I can't give you an answer to that right now. We'll try to look into it, but those premiums were in place well before, before I got here and others on the committee. I don't know if Mike Allwood is in the audience. I know he was planning to come. Mike, can you come up? Maybe you've got some, Mike's been around longer on the committee than even I have, so he might have some insight as to how those premiums were originally calculated and created.
Hi, my name is Mike Allwood. I'm the union co-chair of the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee. So the premiums have just kind of been grandfathered the way they've been done since the beginning. So the employee premiums are subsidized more heavily by the number of employees we have on the plan, so that cuts down. And then the original split for how the 22 and 1/2% that's funded was decided back at the beginning of this, because the city doesn't subsidize the retiree premiums as heavily as they do the employee premiums, and there's a far smaller number of retirees on there. So when you split that 22 and 1/2% by the number of retirees and the number of employees, and then you divide whatever the number of the actuary says, that's where the actual premium for the retirees comes up. And it's basically about a 50-50 split on that side to the retirees pay, what is it, 10%, Director McCarty?
It's roughly about...
10%. The employees pay 12 and 1/2%, and that was voted on and decided back at the inception, back when we still had retirees on the committee, and that was determined to be the fair way to split the premiums.
So is the difference, what portion of the, of the policy that the city supplements?
Well, not really. So the, by ordinance, the employees and retirees pay 22 and 1/2% of whatever the actuary says the total cost of the plan will be. And we originally decided that it would be fair, the fairest way to do it would be to split it evenly between employees and retirees. The employees would pay 11 and 1/4, the retirees would pay 11 and 1/4. The employees were like, you know, we're all going to be retirees one day, so we'll take a heavier split of it. So the employees took 12 and 1/2%, and then the retirees just got 10%. And then, so you take 10% of whatever the cost is, and then you divide that by the number of people who are paying premiums. We have a lot more employees paying premiums than we have retirees paying premiums, so the employees' premium is cheaper. It has to do with the number of people in each pool.
Is there, is there premiums higher than the regular employees?
Yes, retiree premiums are higher than employee premiums.
Is it a substantial number?
It's about double.
About double, but that's...
Because we have about twice as many employees as we have retirees.
And Alderman, that's not atypical in just about anywhere. Retirees tend to pay a higher premium than active employees. That, and we have some benchmarking data on that. We can get you if you want. That's not going to be an issue. The other thing to consider is that retirees, the costs are much higher for those individuals. They have much higher medical costs than the active retirees, it's like comparing, or active employees. It's like comparing a brand-new, say, police officer in their 20s versus a retiree in their 50s or 60s. There, it's just the reality that medical costs are higher for, for retirees.
That makes sense, obviously, but is there, I don't know. I'd like to see those numbers if you don't mind.
Yeah, that won't be a problem. We can provide information.
Kind of just that percentage split prior to the lawsuit that changed the makeup of the committee and the way it was dealt with, we adjusted that split on an annual basis, but once the lawsuit happened, it kind of became a set-in-stone number, and it stayed that way going forward.
Does it have anything to do with contract negotiations for the employees who still cover part of their retirees' cost? Is that, is there anything in there about that calculation?
No, we're, we're not allowed to discuss anything directly affecting the retirees in there, which that percentage split would be considered a part of that. So the only thing we really negotiate is plan management, vendor selection, approving the final actuarial and budget numbers, and then any changes to the plan design.
Thank you.
And one, I'll just add one last thing. If you look at, despite the fact that retirees are paying roughly double, Alderman, the cost for a retiree is still significantly less than what they would pay if they were on their own in the private market, significantly less.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you. And I get that, Bill, but, you know, to me, you get everybody in, in one pool if, you know, you've got a smaller group of retirees, right? Is that what you're saying?
You have.
So their, their costs are going to be higher, but I don't understand why we don't put them all in one pool. You got one set cost, you know, you got the amount, whatever it is per year, and then break it down accordingly. To me, it would be, be cheaper, you know, and it, it's great for the, the employees, they're half the cost, but boy, when they retire, they're, you know, they're, that hurts. And that's, you know, that was one of the, the concerns I got from a lot of the retirees. This year is 1%. Last year, it went up quite substantially. And you can't, you know, these people, you know, the term fixed income is true. And so I, I just, I don't understand why we're not putting them all in one pool and then figuring out the cost based on one pool. I would think you would have a better, I don't know, you'd get better, better, I don't know what the, what the word is, but, you know, the, a better plan, you know, better cost. So, anyway, that's...
Is there a reason it's not in one pool? I guess that's the question.
Yes.
And what's the reason? Besides history?
History is the primary reason. So at the, when this happened in 1999, okay, the employee premiums were subsidized by the city. Well, they were paid 100%. And retirees, employees used to pay zero at the inception of this plan, right? So when things changed, costs started going up. Under Mayor Hacera, she decided to start changing premiums. We all know the arbitration, everything happened. So the way it was negotiated to settle was we would put the employees and the retirees into one plan, because the city didn't want to split off and have just a separate plan for retirees only. Because in 1999, the city subsidized $0 towards the retiree plan, okay? Whatever it actually cost a year, that's what the retirees paid. Basically, basically, it was COBRA rates back then. So in order to do that going forward, the city would have had to have started a whole new plan just for retirees. They didn't want to do that. They wanted to put them in. So it was decided, the ordinance was passed, the city would pay 75%. The employees and the retirees would pay 22 and 1/2%, and the subsidies, refunds, and subrogations would cover that other 2 and 1/2% shortfall. And it worked very well that way. Well, now, as costs have gone up, because of the way it was changed, the city now subsidizes, to some extent, the retiree premiums, which was never really the intent in the beginning, but it's the way that it has grown. So in that first year, it was the retirees paying their actual cost of the premium came up to about 11 and 1/2% of the cost of the plan, and that's what management said. We want them to continue paying 11 and 1/2%. As the cost went up, the employees voted to take on a bigger percent, slide the retirees' percentage down, and at the time that the, everything changed, the committee format changed, this is what the split was, and this is how it's been done ever since. So to do, do it anymore, you would just be agreeing for the city to subsidize greater amounts of their retiree premium, which I'm okay with, but that, that's just, and then it would also increase your unfunded liability on your budget lines and all that kind of stuff. So, quite frankly, it's never been approached. We do understand the problem with retiree health plan, which is why we've been working so hard on this HSA, high deductible plan, because it costs the city and about 80% of people that choose it less than our point-of-service plan. So we've been incentivizing it, and that's why, one of the reasons that our, our renewal this year is so low. When we got rid of Basic Select, we had a huge shift over to the high deductible plan, and our premiums are reflecting that shift, because a consumer-driven plan really does work. So that's what I suggest to retirees and employees that are getting ready to become retirees. The high deductible plan is cheaper. Build up your HSA account while you're working here. Even after you retire, you can still deposit all that money tax-free. Let the feds pay 30% of your medical costs. People don't understand it, but we are really trying to give the retirees a better, low-cost option. But change is hard, and the older we get, the harder it is, so. But change is hard, and the older we get, the harder it is, so. Alderman, I, I don't have an answer or a solution for you on that.
If, if you wanted to have one pool, as you're suggesting, then the calls you're going to get and the visits you're going to get are from the employees because their premiums are going to go up significantly. If you want to have everybody on the same level playing field and same premiums, and I think that's what I heard, maybe I didn't, then the premiums for the, for the active employees will go up pretty significantly. And so those are the calls that, that you will get. See, ultimately, as Mike said, employees and retirees pay twenty-two and a half percent of the program cost split between them. The split's been in place for a while. It's pretty standard for retirees to pay a lot, quite a bit more than active employees. The health, retirees, as I understand it, I don't think we're required to provide health insurance. We are required to provide, or we have health insurance for active employees. So it's been, you know, it's been this way for a while. Everybody gets the same increase, though. It isn't like, and that's what I want to make sure we dispel, it isn't like retirees are getting hit with fifteen percent while active employees are getting hit with one percent increases. It has been and continues to be the same increase for both entities, groups, uh, each and every year.
I think we have actually, the employees have taken higher increases to stave off the retiree increases over the years, too. Several times, we voted to hold theirs down and taken bigger increases on our end. But it's like you said, uh, I don't know, Ron, do you know the numbers of active to retiree off the top of your head? I want to say it's like twelve-hundred to six-hundred, so it's basically two to one, somewhere in that neighborhood. That's not exact because, right, we've had a ton of retirees lately. We have people falling off the plan. It, it's been a very flux year for us, both on the employee side and on the retiree side. But it, it would be asking, you know, the employees to basically go from paying twelve and a half percent probably up to about, what, sixteen, seventeen percent of the total cost? If we were a two-to-one split, it would basically be doubling our share to make it even with the retirees.
Well, real quick to follow up, Mayor. The, the only problem is, is, okay, it's great, but the, you walk out, the, you're, you're fine with your, your plan right now, but you retire tomorrow, you're, you're paying double all of a sudden.
Eighty-six weeks I retire.
Well, in eighty-six weeks.
I'm planning for that.
Eighty-six weeks, you're going to be paying double.
It's not quite double, but yeah.
I don't, I don't have a problem, and I understand what we're doing. I, I kind of understand what we're doing, but I also, you know, paying double is, it seems, seems a little bit crazy to me. And that's the, that's the complaints I've gotten from a lot of recent retirees and that. That's the reason why I didn't throw this on, on consent, because I, I, I got emails and stuff on it, you know, and it's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a big factor in people retiring, it really is.
Oh, I, I'm aware, and I help on, one of the other things I do for the union is I help a lot of people with their retirement planning, so I do understand that. I'm, I'm a bad example because I understand a lot about this world that most people don't. You know, actuarially, our point-of-service plan for family is well over two thousand dollars a month. That's the actual cost of that health insurance plan to everybody that's an involved participant. Our high deductible plan for the family, I think, is running around the twelve, thirteen-hundred a month, actual cost. And they're both incredibly good health plans. If the city didn't extend this insurance to the retirees and you went out on the open market, even on the fixed incomes that most of our retirees have, you're not going to qualify for the heavily subsidized ones from the healthcare marketplace. To get a plan like ours would cost you over a thousand dollars a month. To get a comparable plan with our premiums, you would probably have a five-thousand-dollar spend down before insurance kicked in at all. And then it would be an eighty-twenty plan or a seventy-thirty plan, depending on the monthly premium you wanted to pay. So I, I do feel bad for people, and I feel bad, I mean, I feel bad for our employees, too, you know? We went from paying fifty dollars a month, our family plan now is over four hundred. So, yeah, the costs are going up. Medical technology keeps increasing, the biotech field is exploding, they're able to cure stuff now they couldn't cure even a year ago. They're beating cancers, they're beating everything, but all this stuff is expensive. And it's just driving the costs up. I mean, I'm not opposed to helping retirees out, but I'm pretty good with the unions, but if you go back and ask the unions to double their premiums so retirees can cut theirs in half, you, you're probably going to have a really hard time getting that vote to pass. And like I said, I'm, I'm going to be a retiree very soon. I understand, I'm planning for it, so.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, uh, well, through the conversation, a lot of my questions have been answered, but I think what I'm hearing and you're describing, uh, mirror society, you know, uh, the, the active versus the retiree and that retirees paying more and they have that retirement shock. Dealing with always retiree, what I'm not understanding is, um, their representation on the board. So when the split happened, is that why they don't have a representation on the board? Or do they have their own board, you know, for retiree? Where's their voice in this process?
I understand there is a retiree committee that is an advisory committee, just like the union-side joint committee, and they give input to the administration on their premiums.
Okay.
Prior to the split, the makeup of the committee was two retirees, two aldermen, and then equal numbers of management and labor. And that way, everybody was kind of on board when we, we worked everything out, but due to a lawsuit, we couldn't do it that way.
So when you get an increase or a change, um, this is where that voice or somebody being on the board becomes very important because all along, they're communicating to their members. So retirees should have had a voice somewhere. If it's not on the committee that you're describing, it's on their own committee that you said you believe they probably have.
Yeah, they do.
And, and listening to the two aldermen saying the questions coming in, I, I just think that peace is missing. Their, their representation, getting this information and being involved in sharing, uh, so they could get a better outcome, maybe. I'm not sure, but, uh, but most of my questions have been answered.
And I think that's part of the reason that there are two different ordinances, one for the union side and one for the retiree and non-union side. They're actually split into two different ordinances.
That, that could be issue, too, but, but, but that's all I have right now.
Alderman McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mike, thank you, went to a lot of detail there and took care of ninety-nine percent of my questions, so I appreciate that. I, I do, and I don't know if this is even for you or for, for someone else, but in, in terms of benefits that the pro, that the, um, the program pays out for, um, services that are covered and things like that, is that, does your committee cover those issues? Or where, where is that addressed?
Any change to the plan document has to be, uh, agreed upon by our committee, and then it goes to the administration for his, you know, the administration's point of view, goes through city legal to make sure we're following all the rules and not breaking any laws. And we also have a consulting firm, our committee does, that does a good job of vetting everything and keeps us in between the lines. And then if we agree to it and the administration agrees to it, then it comes before you guys for when the plan document is approved every year, so.
And, and the reason I ask is because the one question that I did get from, um, that didn't cover retiree issues, the one question was asking about a lawsuit that the city recently lost dealing with, um, hormone therapy for a woman. Um, was that issue?
It, it was brought before the committee, and we were never, the committee was never opposed, and I don't believe the city was ever opposed to those coverages, but it's similar to when the civil union part went through. We just basically were waiting for someone to come forward and say, hey, we want this, and let other people test the waters and work out the kinks. And now that we have someone actually in our membership that wants it, we did our due diligence with cost analysis, making sure it wasn't going to destroy us financially, and the committee voted unanimously to include that for the coming plan year. So it's back to the administration. Once they do everything they have to do, I believe that's going to be a part of the new plan document for the coming year.
Thank you very much, I appreciate hearing that.
Alderman Redpath?
Just as a follow-up, um, so the, the number of retirees, when do they fall off and go under the federal system like Medicare or Medicaid?
Sixty-five.
So that, the number you're telling us haven't fell, fallen off yet, is that correct?
Right, we have people that fall off all the time, and our rules, our plan document does not require you to leave the city insurance. We actually have a surprising number of retirees that stay on after sixty-five. However, our plan and any other plan you're on becomes secondary to Medicare. So once you turn sixty-five, the city's health plan. We encourage retirees to get off and get a supplement because they're cheaper than our plan, and they cover, they, they cover the holes in the doughnut. But a lot of our retirees just feel more comfortable staying on what they know, so they stay on and pay the full premium.
So they're using the city insurance as a supplement to Medicare?
As a supplement, yeah.
That's what I do with my state insurance.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's not an uncommon thing. Then we, HR does a really good job of talking the retirees through that when it comes time to change, and they give them resources to find the new supplements, but said, change is hard, and the older we get, the harder it gets, and a lot of people are just so comfortable with what we have, they would rather pay the premium and stay on, and we allow them to do that.
So there's, there's, uh, the retirement age at the city is different in all different levels, correct? Does police and fire, I think, there's a minimum of fifty or something?
Correct.
And then the rest of them, or, can you?
Tier one, and then IMRF tier one is fifty-five, IMRF tier two is sixty-two and sixty-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, real quick. Uh, Mike, I just want to thank you and the committee for all the hard work that you put on, in on this, because there's hundreds and hundreds of hours that are involved in getting us to this point where we can actually vote on something. And, uh, I, I've seen the committee in action over the years, and, and I remember back in the day when it was all, you know, the retirees and the management and the union representatives were all in the same room, and as you described earlier, there was a dispute, and then we had to split the, split the groups. Uh, members of this council and the mayor, we, we put forward an ordinance and created that retire, retiree committee, Alderman Williams, to your point, so that there would be a voice, and there would be an opportunity for that discussion. I, I'm glad that the retirees are contacting members of the council and bringing forward their concerns. Uh, I think, Alderman Hanauer, your question about the pooling and, and, and at least looking into it, if, if you could at least keep that as a part of the discussion in the future. Obviously, we're not going to change things here this evening at the eleventh hour, but, um, I, I just wanted to say, uh, I think a one percent increase from last year is impressive. Uh, that's not easy to do in this market, and, uh, keep up the good work, but I do absolutely understand the concerns of the retirees, and if something can, we can come up with something to help with that, uh, cost and concern.
Like I said, if we could come up with a better way to educate them or figure out a creative way to incentivize, uh, the rules on the high deductible plans tie our hands to some extent, but if we could get more of the retirees and the employees that are getting close to there to understand the value of this high deductible plan, it would save money for everyone, and it would really save money for them in the long run. It would cut their costs by thirty percent right out of the gate. So when they, if you have people to call, you know, try to, try to talk them into looking at and talking to, coming to the benefits fair, talking to HR, and actually getting educated on that high deductible plan, because that's an easy way for most of them to get a thirty percent cut to their medical costs annually right out of the gate.
Mike, Mike, could you do, could you do us a favor and work with HR on coming up with the, at least the concept of how we can better educate our retirees? I think we owe it to them. And, and Mike, I think, uh, in, what is it, eighty-six weeks?
Eighty-six weeks, yeah.
Eighty-six weeks, maybe you could switch from this committee to the other one.
Yeah, sure.
All right.
Could I have a follow-up question real quick? It, it could, i- if they? I'll come back.
Alderman McMinim?
Mike, thank you for your vast knowledge and experience and your familiarity with the history. I think in the past, when we've looked at this, we've concluded that Springfield healthcare insurance is vastly more generous than our peer cities. And you, you and the committee have done an outstanding job in cost, with cost containment, with the, uh, what we've talked about, the high deductible plan and the, uh, our own health clinics. It's been outstanding. Um, and to have a one, only a one percent increase in premiums when we know that healthcare inflation is, uh, double digits in some areas, that's a remarkable achievement. So, uh, nice going to you and the committee. And it's, and for the seniors, the retirees, it is just a bridge, as Alderman Redpath said, it's a bridge until they get to be sixty-five and, and they get on Medicare like a few of us around this horseshoe. But, so it's just a bridge, it doesn't last forever. And you made the point about the retiree health costs are, in general, significantly greater than the younger employees that, that don't have the medical conditions.
And for the IMRF employees that, I mean, we're rapidly approaching tier two is making up the majority of our workforce now, and for those folks, you know, the early retirees are only going to have a three-year bridge. The people that stay till sixty-seven, they will never use retiree insurance because they'll be employees until Medicare age. So the, the whole retiree issue on the IMRF side is really dwindling, and, you know, all of that liability, all that stuff is rapidly sloping off for the city, too, so, you know, that, that's a good thing. And I think the ages have gone up for police and fire as well, so.
Alderman Redpath?
Just a follow-up, Mike, um, so they could switch plans now? I mean, do, or they have to wait for a period if they wanted to go to that different plan?
The, the open enrollment period is March first, so the same time the one percent increase goes into effect, but, uh, yeah, open enrollment will be for thirty days in the January, February timeframe, and HR will put that out, and they mail letters to all our retirees and let them know what their options.
Explaining that, a different option?
And if you guys want to, I'll talk to Ron about it, if they want to put something in there and have some kind of a retiree seminar, I would be happy to host that and speak and answer questions, and I, I think I'm pretty good at explaining the plan since I helped make it, so.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I might, just real quick.
Go ahead.
Uh, Alderman, Redpath, Hanauer, Donlin, everybody. One thing we can do is, we can decide on the, on the retiree, the mix between the premiums on the high deductible plan and the full service Cadillac POS plan, point-of-service plan that Alderman McMinim was referring to. So there is a way for us to bring and have a lower premium for high deductible plan as an option for people. It just, understand it'll mean that the POS has to go up some to compensate for that, um, to have a net no change, but we can do that if it's the wish of the council and the mayor for us to, to do that. I can plug that into the model and, uh, come up with some different options, you know, next year, if that's, if that's the wish of the council and the mayor. We'll keep that in mind.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thanks again, Mike, for your good work, and the committee, too.
Thank you, Mike.
All those in favor, the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes, ten voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is number twenty-two-two-dash-four-nineteen, ordinance authorizing fiscal year twenty-four health insurance premiums and the health benefit summary plan description for the city of Springfield active, non-union, and non-active retired participants for the Office of Hu- Human Resources. Chair Luntanatein motion, place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-four-nineteen on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes, those opposed vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty-two-two-dash-four-twenty-four, ordinance authorizing the creation of an exterior and interior rehabilitation program and for homeowner down payment assistance utilizing SHA tax increment finance funds in amount not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand dollars for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair Luntanatein motion to place agenda number twenty-two-two-dash-four-twenty-four on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good move in second, any discussion? Alderman Redpath?
So Mayor, could you, somebody explain to us how this process is going to work? Um, how the people are going to come in to make applications for, for the money? And if, is there going to be follow-up, uh, on the programs to make sure that the work is being completed, that kind of thing? Is there, somebody can talk to us on that?
Yeah, I don't know, Aaron Horwath or someone from OPEC, like, come up and explain. Currently, uh, there's an application process, and, um, the inspectors go out to make sure the work's been done, but want to walk through that process.
I'll just do a quick overview of the, um, entire ordinance here. Um, very similar to what we had for Ms., uh, Alderman Gregory. Um, very similar to what we had for Ms., uh, Alderman Gregory. Um, we'll continue to pro- provide financial assistance on a matching basis of twenty-five slash seventy-five percent matching basis, except those applicants who earn eighty percent or less of the median family income as established under HUD guidelines. Financial assistance would be provided on a ten slash ninety percent matching basis for the interior and exterior rehabilitation program, and for homeowner down payment assistance of up to ten thousand dollars utilizing the SHA tax increment. So, that's just an overview of what.
And they have to get, uh, two bids, is my understanding, for TIF. It has to be a TIF, uh, qualified expense, and then, um, you know, they fill out the application, it's approved, um, then once the, it's a reimbursable, so once the work's been done, then they get reimbursed for those funds. And Aaron's the, uh, finance officer for OPEC, so.
Yeah, I would add the, the matching component would be a requirement to be awarded, and then after securing that award or being awarded, then the award money, you'd be reimbursed, uh, with the grant funds for work completed.
So, are, are we going to have people that are going to be inspecting the, the, the jobs, or how are we, how are we going to make sure that they're getting the work that we're paying for?
That, so Ravi Doshi does run this program. Um, as far as inspecting, I can speak to the federal grants, the HUD grants, we do have two in-house inspectors.
Okay.
Um, that would do similar process, they're reimbursable grants with federal funds, and once work has been completed, we do have inspectors that can confirm that, uh, who would reimburse the work. Um, if that has to occur with public works inspectors or our internal inspectors, I'm not sure the parameters on that, um, but we, we can send inspectors out and would.
Okay. I, I'm for the program, I think it's a great idea, just want to make sure we're getting, and the people are getting, this is probably the best expenditure monies that we can do with TIF money for, for people that need this. There was talk about, um, forgiving or, or, uh, forgiving the, the, some of them have been, uh, fined because they, they had inspected problems, and you can't keep fining people who don't have money to pay the fines. It doesn't make much sense. Are, are we going to do that? Are we going to forgive or lay back off the fines now that if, uh, that, that they're, they're applying to get the problems fixed? Because it doesn't really make any sense to make them pay a two or three, four hundred dollar fine if, if they're trying to get money to fix it, and the best way they can do it is this way. Is that right?
Yeah, I don't know the process for waiving the fines myself. Um, I do know that we had, at one point, uh, still do have Justine Peterson, uh, an organization that offers microloans. Um, so if, if a fine payment is something that they need to take a loan out, um, to, to navigate right now before receiving assistance, if our assistance is too slow to navigate that fine process, um, they do have that option, but otherwise, uh, waiving a fine, I don't know the particulars on.
Corporation council, could you ask that? Answer that.
Yeah, there is a process, excuse me. The, you may recall that there are similar plans the council has approved, uh, most recently over the la- actually over the last couple of three years, um, where the infrastructure, the process is set up, like with cannabis grants and different other things, so all the proper paperwork and inspections will be in place before any monies would be issued, you know, receipts, and, uh, it, it's a, I, I don't like to use the word, uh, automatic pilot, but there's a complete process with OCDBG, TIF, and cannabis programs that has to be done. There is a process for the ability to look at waiving, uh, fines, I think we'd actually specifically talked about that. Uh, and that would be ordinarily what we would probably end up doing is just getting a modified order, because, you know, the fine comes through the administrative court. So, if in fact they are, um, the work is done, then we would be in a position to ask for the fine to be reduced or just forgiven.
And obviously, the, the, I'm making that comment because if people are really making an attempt, if they're actually, they don't have the money, they're doing, making an attempt, and we're, they're getting involved in this program so they can fix these problems, we don't want to keep beating on them, we just don't. And the thing is, is there's a lot of people out there just aren't going to, aren't going to do it. Now, tho- that's a different subject, and need to be, they need to be, uh, fined and collected on, but it's important that this program go through, because it's, it's probably one of the better things we've done for the people who need the help directly.
Yeah, actually, on, um, what we're trying to do, OPEC recently, by a few months ago, started the process where they attend the, uh, the hearings with regards to, uh, property code violations and, uh, individuals that would qualify for TIF or some other type of means, uh, they try to get with them and see if they do qualify, so that'd be part of the process, getting ahead of the curve before the, uh, fine is levied, because there's a notice that goes out to the individual that has property code violation, they have to appear in court, they appear in court, then they have so many days to rectify the situation, so that's one way we're trying to get ahead of it. But, uh, yeah, we'll take a look at those that do have, uh, fines, and you're right, it doesn't make sense that they're trying to fix up the property and they need assistance, why would you charge them? You know, it should go towards the house, that'd be a better use of the funds than having them take their hard-earned money and pay a fine. You know, we want them to do the right thing, that's the whole intent of the fine process.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, after we, uh, get this all passed, and, and not only, uh, this one, but our, our Far East TIF, um, I, can we have, um, you know, after you sign, I know you'll take, you know, got to take some time to sign it, but I think after all of this is completed and we're ready to roll, we, we, um, if we could work with Ms. Giulio on, on communication and update of our websites to ensure that the maps look right, that the information is there and stuff, because this is a major change, and, and, uh, you know, probably seventy-five percent of it is changing, so I want to make sure that's out there to the community and, um, that they know that these changes are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for coming up. I, just real quick, I'm thinking from the other side, what sort of supports does OPEC offer for people who are going through this program? And as the mayor said, you need to get multiple, you know, two bids for contracts. I, I mean, I just know personally, sometimes that can be a little daunting to know who to reach out to, so do you have, um, do you have supports for people who are looking to start i- in this program, and, and how they find a contractor, and how to kind of vet a contractor, maybe they haven't gone through that process before?
Piggybacking on Alderman Gregory about, uh, updating our mediums of communication, um, if there are not, which I don't know of any resources myself specifically offhand, but if there are not, we can definitely, uh, entertain updating our mediums and providing that to the public.
Yeah, i- it would be nice, because I know, um, I mean, even knowing what to ask a contractor, you know, if you're not familiar with that process, it, it can, you know, it, it's, it's a new territory, and people want to make sure that they're getting the best person to give them, you know, a really good job, to know that they can, you know, you're not, um, I mean, I just, I had a, a friend reach out, was complaining about a con, we're, we're getting a roof tomorrow, um, but, you know, they came, they did half the job and then disappeared. It's, well, you know, were they licensed, were they insured, I mean, who did you go with? And then they didn't even think to ask all those questions. So, you know, for people who maybe, um, have not had experience with this, I think that's a nice area of education, and I don't, an outreach that can support people so that they make sure that they get someone who's going to do the job well, do it right, and finish it, so that they've got, you know, something that can be inspected. So, yeah, I would appreciate that. Also, um, if you're doing, uh, updating education and outreach, obviously, we also have the program for people who are, you know, meet that low-income criteria but are in a, a non-TIF or other zone, like to make sure that that's included in, in any education and outreach, and that that's included when you're meeting with people who come into administrative court, so that they know, um, it's not just living within a special zone, but if you meet that income criteria throughout the city right now, really, we have supports for, for our residents, and we can help you get your home fixed, we can resolve these issues without, you know, all the stress of, I mean, it, it is stressful to have an administrative finding, that's, no one enjoys that, I'm sure. So, people who are coming in and trying to do the right thing, just please make sure they know about all of our programs.
We intend to fully support all of our programs and the space in between.
Thank you. I, I know, and I know you do, I just, I just want to make sure that, um, because I think that's a great idea, to be in the administrative court, have someone from your office in there, um, to, to help people out. I, that's, that's a great move, I appreciate that.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no, the voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes, none voting no. Chair Luntentain a motion to suspend rules and place on first reading agenda number twenty-two-two dash four-four-six, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with the city of Springfield, Office of Public Utilities to upgrade water infrastructure to support fire suppression for the entire block of three hundred East Adams Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Good move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All the ones purchase? Doubled up, all the ones purchase.
Make sure you saw me. Um, does this benefit the whole, so I've been getting some calls about it. I know that one entity had been very adamant about pushing it. Do the other businesses get to tap into this, and is it a charge to them?
Uh, it would be a charge, it'd be a centralized line where they could tap in.
Okay. Is there something that, um, Director Bottom could send out to just explain and have one message going to them? Or, I don't know if that's Director Bottom or if that's Doug?
Yeah, it'd be CWP.
Sorry.
And we can send that out, as far as how that would work.
Yes, before we get started?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Is there any, uh, unfinished business come before the council? Any, uh, new business with council members? There's a couple of items, um, Alderman McMinim?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just acknowledge, um, our utility first responders, we had two crews come back from Florida where they did outstanding work, and every, and in our own city, every, every night potentially, there are first responders out there doing work, so we had a twelve-inch, uh, water mainline, uh, break outside Christ the King School yesterday on Barbary last night, and, um, our crews worked into the night, into the morning, and, um, the school was able to open, and there were actually two breaks there last night, so, um, thank you, our utility first responders for always being there and, and reducing the outages and making, uh, life bearable for our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Then, uh, I don't know if Doug's here or not, but, uh, should ask the crews for a recap of, uh, what, what, well, what didn't, were they prepared, and what would help in that, uh, situation if we, God forbid, we ever have to do that again, so, uh, that'd be good to build off of that experience. Uh, there is a ribbon-cutting tomorrow for the Fifth and Sixth Street underpasses, Ward six, right? Alderman to send so?
Yes, a little more than twenty-four hours' notice would have been nice. Some people have meetings.
Nate, you want to speak to that? I think they just, uh, trying to work around the Senator Durbin's, uh, schedule.
I'll take it up with the Senator.
State, I believe, but.
Yeah, we're, um, having a ribbon-cutting, obviously, for the Fifth and Sixth Street underpasses, it's, um, just on the north side of the, uh, Sixth Street, uh, the Sixth Street underpass, just, uh, just north of, uh, Princeton Avenue. Um, that event will be held at eleven o'clock tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you. And then also tomorrow's a public forum in Ward nine for Brunson Lane, and that's for the, um, Chatham Road extension, I believe.
Brunson Lane.
Pardon me?
Brunson Lane.
Brunson Lane, and that's for, uh, four o'clock at Revelation Worship Center, thirteen-fifty North Brunson Lane. And then on Thursday, there's, uh, actually several people, elected city officials participating in Land of Lincoln Pink Warriors, cocktails for cure Thursday, October sixth, from five to eight at Win, Lose, or Draw. So, the pro- proceeds go to, um, breast cancer assistance, uh, for the local efforts with regards to Susan G. Komen Cancer Society. And then, uh, last but not least, we'd like to recognize actually one of our very own, or Chatham's very own, Dave Dahl, the first recipient of the Outstanding Illinois Father Award bestowed by the Illinois Council on Responsible Fatherhood. So, congratulations, Dave, we appreciate, uh, we appreciate you raising the awareness of, uh, city council meetings, but also what you do, and the most important job you have is, that is being a father, so congratulations. Uh, we do have a few people signed up to speak, one is James Johnson.
He didn't get up here quick enough last meeting, so we, we missed him.
Oh, is that him?
Got his gloves on. Good evening. James Johnson. And as the, well, Springfield resident lifelong, Ward two, y'all know. I'm gonna cut straight to the chase. I've been sent back listening to the meetings, and I might have missed a few, but let's talk about diversity. First, let me get some kudos on diversity, because in a minute somewhere, I was here some months ago talking about some issues, and so I'm going to bring a few back up again. But I want to thank, see, the Police Department for making efforts on diversity. But let's get off the Police Department. Uh, Public Works, thank you for making an effort in the changes where you needed to too. And there's been a lot of discussion about unions. Can we please stop talking about the diversity on unions and on our jobs? I attend the meetings. I know what our meetings look like. I know what's on the, on, on, on the staffs. So, if we could quit talking about four seventy-seven and nine sixty-five, all you guys around this horseshoe know the deal. I know who gets checks, I know who makes phone calls and communications, so can we move past jumping on the unions about what's on them and what's not? These two over here, they know, if something ain't right, they gonna hear from me. So, we don't have to worry about that. But what really disturbs me for my last three minutes is the Fire Department. Let's put a pin in it right there, because that might take more than three minutes. So, you just had a class that come in, and all I know is, there's about twenty people, and I think some months ago, I asked you, and I stated, we do not have any black or brown females on our Fire Department in twenty-twenty-two in the capital of Illinois, and nobody but me seems to think that's a problem or issue. Now, I don't care who's running for what from now on, but this is not going to go away. We can have black and brown on the city council, we can have black or brown on the Supreme Court, we can have black and brown everywhere else, but for some reason, that Fire Department, there's no one that looks like black and brown on the female side. Now, I'm gonna put my godly hat on because I'm angry, really, but God cannot be pleased with our community the way we are treating certain parts of our community. Now, my community that, that I represent, don't we deserve to see somebody that looks like us on those fire trucks? And I'll wait for an answer all night. It's okay that your kids can see somebody that look just like you, but the kids that I represent, or through our whole community, forget what wars and what size of town, I ain't seen a Filipino, I ain't seen a, 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 a Puerto Rican, or I ain't seen nothing in that Fire Department that look like Juan or look like myself as a female. And I don't know how many males that came through, but nobody's talking about it, from this horseshoe to the media, and I don't understand that. Nobody seems to care. We spend all this money, and let me put a pin right there about the money, because the Fire Department and the Police Department, and I, I'm not, ain't mad at the Police Department, they making efforts, at least they contact the community and say, hey, you know, we're doing recruitment, they do what they need to do. But the Fire Department, you going over budget all the time, and nobody's on that department that looks like me enough. Let me give you a little history. Martin Luther King Firehouse, I think it's Station Five, am I correct? Martin Luther King Firehouse, I think it's Station Five, am I correct? Used to be the Black House. You know what I mean? It used to be the Black House. That's where all the black, back in the seventies, we had more black males on the Fire Department than we do today. And I don't know about y'all, but that's a problem. And I'm gonna throw this one out for free, and I mean it. We want to build, we want to build a new firehouse and have blacks on it for a bunch of white people to live in. White males and white females. Stop. Pump the brakes. I got a problem with that, because all we seem to care about is who's on the construction, but the Fire Department, we don't, we don't say nothing about. So I'm gonna remember this, because I know there's some who guys, you know, want to run and do some other stuff. But we gotta stop. You can't say you care about our community, but then the kids in our community don't have nobody to look up to to say, oh, that's a female that looks like me or a male that looks like me. All I care about is our future and these kids in our community. I don't, I ain't, I'm not up here for nothing else. I'm not running for nothing. But I will be voting, and I'm gonna make sure everybody in my community vote, because we're gonna be listening on what you standing for and what you doing. Because we need people that's gonna care about us genuinely. And this, and this marijuana money, don't touch it. I'm just gonna make that plan. Don't even touch the marijuana money, because the firefighters are already getting some of it for their pensions. So I'm out of time, and I'm done. But I'll take any questions, and I'd love to hear your comments about what's really going on at the Fire Department. God bless y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you for discussing a difficult topic, Mr. Johnson. And I think your goals and your intentions are, are meaningful and well-intended. I think maybe at a different council meeting, we can have our Human Resources Chief discuss the, the expensive contract that we pay for, that the City Council pays for to make sure our testing procedures are fair and objective and meet all the standards. I think we don't have a problem with keeping people out. We have a problem of getting persons in the door that pass all the tests. And so that's our challenge. I don't think we, we keep people out. We just, we, we want people to come in, but, you know, we've got these tests that everyone has to test, to have to satisfy to get in the door. And so.
What it comes down to is a recruitment issue. That's what, plain and simple. You get the more numbers, you have a greater success rate.
But it's also too much nepotism.
Right.
Recruitment and nepotism. That's our problem. Things gotta change.
Well, really, I've said this before, you know, it's all about recruitment, you know? That's what it comes down to. And where do the Fire Department, well, Police Department, Chief Winslow did a great job. He went out to the neighborhoods. If he was at a retailer and someone was, you know, had good manner, it didn't matter who they were, he'd recruit them and say, if you're looking for a job, I think you'd be good at being a police officer. That's how he did it. The other side of it is with the Fire Department, they look for people with experience. Well, where do you get the experience for Fire Department? Rural Fire Departments. They're volunteers, they're already there, they test higher than others. That's the issue that we really need to, that's one of the issues. The other issue is the recruitment factor, because, you know, I've heard, you know, our own chief say incorrectly that, you know, well, we gotta wait till everybody, you know, we gotta start in grade school. Chief Winslow didn't start till grade school. He started today or the day of, just like Scarlett's doing. That's what you have to do. You can't just say, oh, it's gonna come in time, because as you pointed out, and Alderman Gregory will probably speak to this, is it doesn't happen through time. You have to have a concentrated effort, a genuine sincere effort to be diverse in the department. So that's one that we're working on. That's one of the reasons we are going to test in January. So if you know of any individuals that are interested, that'd be the time. We are letting the list lapse, because we are gonna hire the next set, and there's a, a couple minorities within that list that will be brought on. But after that, it wasn't going to be diverse, so we are going to have a new test coming up in January. So that's where we're at with regards to that.
And Mr. Mayor, just to finish my thoughts. You know, in the military, we're having very difficult recruitment problems right now. And we spend massive amounts of money on, on recruitment. And there's statistics out that eighty percent of those that try to get into the military don't make it, because the physical, mental, challenges are such, the weight standards, we just aren't getting enough recruits right now in the military. It's a serious problem, and it's, it's across the population. So, and I'm sure the, the Police and Fire, they have the same difficulty in making sure that the physical strength and, and all the rest that comes with it is there before you get in the door. So it's, it's a big challenge for our whole society right now, and hopefully we'll, we'll get through it. So I just wanted to finish that thought, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Ward two, for coming up, always speaking your mind. So, you know, I'll just address a few, few things. I know you spoke on the union topic and things coming up, and, and, you know, I'll speak for myself, because I know Alderman Williams will speak for his. But I know a, a lot of times, and I compliment four seventy-seven and someone I've met with them, they, they are willing to try to diversify their, their organizations. But that doesn't, and will never stop our push to see minorities, women, and black people on, on the various projects that we go by. I often try to take a look at, at all of them, you know, as we got a lot of work in Springfield, and we're blessed to have that. I've been to some other towns just by chance, and they don't have this much work going on in, in our city. So we're doing a good job pushing down the road. We always want to see a diverse situation as, as Alderman Williams is pushing for popular play. So, you know, the, the unions that have that, you know, I, I certainly, you know, don't have a problem with that, and the unions who don't, who want to improve those numbers, we're all for that. Most of the offices is over there on the east side. So, so, you know, Mia and Roy is available, and we willing to help boost whatever numbers on that. But, you know, you know, if you watch the tapes, you know, we, we, we're always gonna push for it, and, you know, we don't try to just jump on unions or anybody else. We, we're, we're just more about our diversity and seeing the numbers on the project. So as far as our firefighter department, you know, I always try to listen to my, my elder council members and handle a lot of these conversations behind the scenes. And me and the mayor has had good conversations. I've had a conversation with the chief, because the facts of the matter is, is, you know, in nineteen seventy-nine, I believe, we had nine black firefighters, and we have ten now. We have probably about twelve minorities altogether. That's forty-five years with the same type of numbers. So of course, we want to push those things, and, and we are trying to work on it and recruiting. Me and the mayor have these conversations, and, you know, I, I'm not opposed to having them again with, with our chief to try to do whatever we can. I, I don't, you know, we spoke on the police and their recruitment numbers and, and things, and, you know, I know it was spoken on that, that they brought thirteen on. And I didn't say anything, because I have seen improvement from our Police Department from Chief Winslow. I think Chief Scarlett's gonna continue that same path. But I will say that, that, the, the thing that we cannot excuse is, is recruitment and effort, because there's no way that we can say that, that our Police Department has added six, eight, whatever, and over the last three years, it's, it's been some of the most trying times in our country's history. So if they can do it, anybody can do it. And I, you know, that's just how I feel. So thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will always be for diversity, especially as a guy born and raised in Springfield, where I had my black police officers, my Uncle Tony Petty, my Uncle Don Sluter, I mean, I can just go down the list. I had black firemen. I had to run for, and those were the examples that I saw, so I do know it's possible. But I, but I, what I'm kind of resenting, and James, you may not be doing this, or you may be doing it, I don't know. But because I raised a union issue, and then I, because I went home and I got flooded with, you just had all white class of police officers, and I said, and? And then, of course, the number one thing they throw on your face is the Fire Department, you know, and their numbers, and they are lousy. But I'm an all-around guy. I get with the Police Department, I get with the Fire Department, and I get with the unions. It's a tough, it's a tough discussion, especially sitting here as a Democrat, a part of a party made up of, of black people and, and unions. It becomes very tough, but you know what? If I don't open my mouth, nothing changes. Nothing changes for my people. So I will always say, where's your women? And, and ask, ask the Fire Chief, where's your women and where's your people of color? Both chiefs know this, they know this about me. What I have stopped doing is saying we shouldn't do it on the horseshoe. I said it about the union horseshoes, because it came up. A project in my war, me already having thoughts of this workforce development and all the, oh, what do you, this is good for you, oh, well, no, it's not. If the unions ain't have it, and I had to learn something, got a bunch of calls that night, okay, you know, ask me, I wasn't talking about you, I was, well, ask me everything when I was with the state. Okay, I wasn't talking about you, S C I U. So I had to quit using the word union so loosely. Some unions, particular disciplines, the trades in particular, even within the trades, James, you're correct, maybe your union does have these women and these blacks. But I still got plumbers, electricians, you know, I still have disciplines that the numbers are just not there, and even in your union. The unions that do have the numbers, I get the calls from members who are scared, they're scared for their jobs, they're scared to take on the big man. And, and they say, well, when's the last time you worked? I haven't, man, I'm on the board, or I'm trying, whatever their process is. How often do you work? Do you work in Springfield? As an ultimate, I'll try to make sure you're on at least the projects in my war, and they gotta get ready for me, because they have never had somebody to be so in their face about it, not to be mean, not to be mean spirit, but just to help my people out. So I have opportunity here, I'm working with a developer, I'm working with the mayor of the city. I'm gonna always try to say, okay, let's make this a blended project, a little union, a little workforce development, men, women, all of it, you know, black, white, let's just do the, reflect Springfield. Let's just reflect Springfield. That's, that's all I'm after. Brandon, when they raise it next, we gonna go through the same thing, and God forbid us if we get to Pillsbury, because this could be huge, huge jobs. I want the jobs. I want them to be union jobs. I'm a working man, working class man, always have been, always have supported it. So it's never been personal for me. It's never been personal for me. The money question, the check question, my thesis, go back, two thousand and three, U I S, master's degree thesis, money has a negative impact on the legislative process. And I argue that through my paper, that many years ago, so it ain't personal like some of the people today are taking it. It's just a true belief that I have about why we can't do better jobs for our people because of this process that, that it's the system in which we live in. So Mayor, what I would say is that, yes, I did bring that up, and I do do that to the unions, but trust me, the Police Chief knows, and the Fire Chief knows, I just happen to believe right now, I think the Alderman, McMenamin said it correctly. It's a really tough time in the country right now for young men and women to qualify because of the physicalness that's involved in. I had a young man tell me, oh, Sarge, if you, if you had to get in today, you wouldn't get in. You wouldn't be able to pass the physical agility test. I don't know if I would, probably not. He's probably right, but I'm just telling you, things have changed, it's tough all around, but it's, it's never about picking on one, any type of thing. It's about diversity for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman, purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that you've brought it up in the past about me going for the Fire Department test. There was another young black lady who also went for the test, too. It's a very, very hard obstacle test that we have to pass, and I've been working with the Springfield Fire Department Union to try to help educate people on the endurance that you need having to carry over fifty pounds on your shoulders to go upstairs and stuff. So I think that that plays a big role in it, is the education piece, and I've been strongly pushing for it. But yes, I don't sit up here and talk about it, weekly about it, or bring it up at various times, but that is something that we're pushing for, and I do commend the Fire Department at the time, and this was about seven years ago, before I even thought about really being in politics, that I went to them, and they opened it up for us to go through that obstacle course, try to teach us and say, where can we help you at, so that we could try to get you on the Fire Department. Thank you.
Alderman Hannah?
Thanks, Mayor. You know, as far as getting women, African-American women in the Fire Department, I agree with you, it'd be great. James, talk to them, get them, get them to apply for it. You know, it's not just us that's recruiting, it's the, it's the people in the community, all throughout the community. I've, I've tried to get former, former athletes to try to, try to go with the, you know, Fire Department and the Police Department. But I gotta tell you, with the way things are going and the way, you know, the police are treated and the, how the Fire Department is, you gotta be a special cat to run into a frickin' burning building, and not everybody's up for that. You know? And as far as, you know, you were talking about having, having, I, I'm not sure what you're getting at with the, having African-Americans out with the white folk. James, I had a, I had a health event out at Lake Springfield about five or six years ago. I can't, it was quite a while ago. And they took me by boat, I was, I got over. I didn't care if they, if they were purple, did not care. All I wanted to see was big enough boots that could haul my big butt out of the boat and get me in the ambulance and get me taken care of. That's all I care about. And if, if you're, if you're in a fire, you're gonna want someone that can run up that ladder, grab you, throw you over the shoulder, and run down. And if, 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 you know, but there's just certain, it's a different mindset. And I, I will tell you, we just had a class, I know one of the young men that, that came in, he's, he minority, we stole him, he's originally from Springfield, he had to start at Decatur. We stole him from Decatur. And, and he'll be a big asset to the, to the Fire Department, and I think I could see him, he's a leader, he, he would move up. But this all comes from the whole city has to, has to do it. You coming up and, and tell us, we, we're aware of it. We go out, we recruit, but it's a different mindset. And, and let's face it, the kids today, they don't want to go through that. You can't get them to join unions. You know? And, and they, they show up, then they leave, they, they don't want to come back. So I think that the Fire Department's trying. I think the Police Department is trying very hard to, to, you know, to bring the minority population up and, and the, and also the female population. But it's hard. This is, this is hard times. This isn't like it was in the seventies. It's a completely different mindset. And I don't want to sound like an old man, but things have changed from when, from the seventies, let me tell you. So, thank you.
Might be for the better, though. I don't know.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hannah, I will agree with you that, that you're an old man, but. No, I, I, and I, I hear what you're saying. James, I appreciate you coming up and talking about this. I, I think I have a slightly different perspective on, on how we should be reaching out to some of the young people. I actually, I was fortunate, I had an opportunity to go speak at the Alternative Ed Program on Lawrence and talk to some of the kids there. They, they had great questions about what does it mean to be on City Council, what does it require with civic engagement? And, you know, it, it was, it was encouraging to me to see that these young people who, you know, they're in an alternative program, still wanting, having interest and engagement and, you know, and asking them, you know, what do you want to see in your city? I, I'll be honest, anytime I talk to someone, younger kids even, well, high school age, I always say, hey, look, reach out to the city. The city has jobs, the city, we hire, we're constantly posting jobs, and look at the Police and Fire Department. And I got some, I think some of them kind of laughed at me a little bit, and I said, you know, really, our Police and Fire Department is constantly looking for the kids who look, for new recruits that look like our community. And, and I know that's an active focus of both departments, so. And I- And I gotta say, they followed up with emails to me with more questions, more things that they want to, you know, some of their hopes and their plans for the city. I think, I agree with you, we shouldn't give up on our local kids. They've got a lot of ideas, they've got a lot vested in the city, and so, just if you guys, we've got two, I'm talking to you guys right behind you, James, but the alternative program needs to be part of our outreach for hiring too. There are kids who are, you know, not everyone's path is straight and smooth. To be honest, I don't know if I trust people who say they have a straight and smooth path. But there are kids there who want to contribute and be a part of moving this city forward, and so, maybe a little more optimistic about some of the possibilities and potential in our young community. But you're right, we have to keep an eye on it, we have to keep this pressure on, and I appreciate that you come in and speak to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Redpath?
You know, I was a law enforcement officer for thirty years, and I was in the military for thirty years. And for my law enforcement career, I ran the Investigations Division for the Illinois Attorney General's Office. I was the chief there for, downstate chief for about eight years. Then I moved over to the Conservation Police and was a deputy chief there. And every time we got the opportunity, we did everything we could to recruit minorities. And Alderman DeSenzel can tell you the same thing, she's the chief of staff there, so she goes through this every day like we did every day. We're all competing for the same people. We're all competing because we want to make all of our departments diverse. That's the common rule in law enforcement. In the military, it's a little bit different. But it's the common rule in law enforcement, you're going out and competing, trying to get in, not just anybody. It's a different job. You got to be able to run into a building, like Ralph said, when the building's on fire. That's why I became a cop, because I didn't want to run into a fire building. But the bottom line is, is that all the police departments, all the fire departments are competing for basically the same people. And their number one priority is to look for diversity. They want that in their communities. We all want that in our communities. Alderman DeSenzel can tell you the same thing, it's tough to find. And we lose them to state police, we lose them to the county, we lose them to Secretary of State, and all the chiefs know that. It's a small pool, and it's a tough job, and it's hard to get them. And we do, I know that Ken Winslow and Kenny Scarlett worked for me out in the air guard. We always were looking for them. And these guys are putting the best efforts in trying to get them. And to say that we're not is not true. I knew a lot of the firemen back in the seventies. My father was assistant chief of police and was buddies with all those guys, all the firemen and policemen. They came to our house for barbecues and on the weekends, and so, I grew up in that area, you know? The bottom line is, is that we're all competing for the same thing, it's tough to do. But we all want, we absolutely want diversity in our police and fire department.
Then Alderman DeSenzel?
Well, thank you, Mayor, since you invoked my name. You know, what we've done, because there is also a fire department within the Department of Natural Resources. So there is a police department and a fire department. And, you know, we've gotten really creative. We're traveling the state, going to all kinds of different fairs, whether it's the Puerto Rican Day Fair or the Hispanic Women of Springfield. They hold, you know, informational sessions all the time over here at the library. So, we're getting very creative about how we can do outreach to the communities that are not applying for our jobs. And that's all the jobs. But the problem also is, we don't have anyone in H R. So, you know, our H R department is way down, which, that's a national phenomenon. That's not unique to, you know, state government. It's hard to find people to do the work to find the people. So, you know, everyone's struggling right now, and something's got to give, and something will turn around. But we have to be creative, and we have to think outside the box, and we have to do different things that we're not used to doing, whether it's showing up at the table at the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Walk, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, we have to be all places at all times trying to get people into the city and to our workforce.
Alderman Donla?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, this is obviously an extremely important issue for this community. It's important today, it's important for the future. To touch upon one of your points, Alderman Redpath, is we have to make sure that our department as a whole is competitive. Whether we got to tweak things, I don't know if it's the salary. I don't like it when I hear stories about a young officer, as an example, that comes on board, we put them through the training, and then they go somewhere else. That's disturbing. I've had those conversations with the chief, chief of police, that is, and I know it's alarming. Some of the other agencies, such as the state, I think comes up quite a bit, that they offer more pay, better incentives. And anyway, I think we constantly have to look at those things. As a legislative branch, you know, bringing these things forward are obviously extremely important. But I trust our two chiefs and that they will hear the comments from this evening and take them to heart and help us formulate a plan that makes Springfield competitive so that we can resolve these issues, not only short term, but long term. It's got to get better. So, thank you.
Thank you. Then, forgot to announce, Thursday, October sixth, eleven P M., that's the deadline for the Springfield Police Department application. So you go online and fill that out. I don't know if Assistant Chief Stunkel, if you want to come up and state anything, or...
I'm coming back on.
I'm not trying to delay this any longer. I think you all have wonderful ideas about recruiting. It's what everyone is saying, you know, from what the mayor said about getting out in front of people, Alderman DeSenzel, you know, finding new ways, and that is what we are doing. We do have a test, applications are due this Thursday, eleven P M. The tests are coming up, October tenth and fifteenth, there's two separate testing dates. You know, in that same idea of doing things differently, it used to be, you know, a process over a couple days. We've condensed that, where they can come one day, you know, especially out of town people. You only have to make one trip to Springfield to take that test. You can split it up if you need to, being very flexible when it comes to getting people in the door to take the test, to increase our numbers of potential applicants. We did just, I'll interview a young black man today who said he had been interested in the fire department, but now he's coming to the police department, so we're happy to say that. We stole one from them. We're also stealing one from Saint Louis P D., he comes on next week with us. Very bright young man who we'll be happy to have on the department starting next week, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
And we do have Debbie Roper signed up to speak. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Debbie Roper, and I live at seven twenty-five South Livingston Street. And I know you've all heard of it. And I wish you had stopped by, Mayor, last night because I was out there waiting on you. This, I don't think my issue has been sufficiently put before you. I have a ski slope hill. The sidewalk has actually a ledge across it. Then you have the sidewalk, and then you have a gutter and the sidewalk meet. And the black strip that keeps weeds from growing in there was never put in there. Now, I've lived there for three years. The first two years, I pulled these weeds by hand, and I'm sixty-nine years old now. So this is an extremely difficult process for me. I have arthritis in my knees, I have arthritis in my hips, I have arthritis in my hands. But to get it done, that's what I did. Now, I had to take the grass off of my front yard and plant creeping thyme so that I don't have to mow the ski slope, which has caused this year with all the rain, tons and tons of weeds there. So, I can't handle the weeds along the street and the weeds that I have to deal with besides. And it all comes down to, there's a black strip that goes between the sidewalk and the gutter that keeps the weeds from growing. But all the way around my house, and mine is about the only house there that does not have it.
We talked to your alderman.
Yeah, we'll have Public Works went by there, I think took a look at it, so. We'll check that and see if that's something we have to do, or we'll spray it, one or the other.
Okay.
I mean, that's the two remedies.
And we'll get it done. Because I've been waiting all summer.
You were looking at me like I was your older person, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, I knew you weren't. You looked like somebody who had a little bit of interest.
Well, I absolutely do.
How about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Williams?
Thank you. So, and, that's Alice's best friend.
We know Alice.
And, you don't have to do like Alice, but let me just say this. So, I had a guy do that for you, correct?
You had a guy come and weed eat it.
Right. So you want it fixed, because actually, you're the only block like that. So I do agree with you that it's probably when whoever we hired to put the sidewalk in...
Right. They didn't put that piece in there.
Right. Because all the rest of them have it, and they don't have that problem on the rest of Livingston all the way down. What I want you to know, that it did get reported, and it did get known, but something like that, and that strip out there, and that growing, it's just not a high priority. When we got fly dumping, we got all these other things that are a little more serious. That's why I had that guy come and do that.
I understand that.
Because I wanted to kind of keep you settled down, but I know who you're friends with, and I know...
But it's...
I'm not surprised to see you tonight, is what I'm saying.
It's already growing again.
It's going to grow because we get rain.
You know what I'm saying? And so, no matter how hard I work, it's never going to look nice.
Okay. Well, I'll let Nate talk with you.
They've been by there, so we'll address it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder, Alice Rainey? Or, I'm sorry, Alderman.
You know, I'm going to take a little bit of different tact here. You know, we expect our citizens, for example, we've got how many, five thousand inlets spread out in the gutter? And we like our citizens to help their neighborhoods and exercise self-help and take a rake and open up the inlet, because we all have to contribute to solutions. And so, it seems to me like a solution to that problem is you just buy one gallon can of oil filler, and you put it down that crack. And we expect our people to, you know, we can't send a crew over to handle something. In my opinion, it's just, we got bigger problems, bigger priorities than a situation like this. We expect our homeowners to take an interest in how their property looks and how the sidewalk looks, and to exercise some self-help. So that's my point of view, and I don't mean to offend the lady that really wants to make her place look good because I think that's a good goal, too.
Generally, how you do handle that is you spray it, you kill it, and then you weed eat it so that it doesn't come back. However, with that being said, we'll take a look at it, we'll see if we can add it to a future, one of our future crack filling programs to help resolve the issue.
Alice Rainey?
Well, I'll help you for Saturday when we blow it off, okay? When we burn it off. I came up here for two reasons. One is that, yes, I come up here. I think everybody that is an alderman should have some of the people that they represent up here to see how things go, to give them encouragement to continue the good jobs that they are doing, just not me, okay? Yes, she's a friend of mine. And I will have her come up if she has a problem, which is about the best way to get things done. But she's not like me, Roy. And I don't think there's another person like me, okay?
That's true.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Because I want things done right. That's why I had a cop come out on my lot and look through the drawers and found the name of the person that was doing the dumping. I haven't had any more dumping on my lot, okay? And it's mold all the time. The only reason my front yard's the way it is is because I had my trees in the back cut, and it killed the grass, okay? So you see, we all want to work, and we all want to get it done. But when people do sloppy jobs, this is what you get. You get people up here complaining. When people do their jobs the proper way, then it doesn't bother anybody, okay? And the reason why I said that it didn't get done right is because everybody else's look nice, but hers. Looks like she can just forget about the sidewalk and let the weeds grow, because that's how tall they are, okay? That's not right. And when you put that strip down, young man, it works, it seals them together, and it keeps all that down, it looks nice. And it is probably costly. We probably could do it with some type of whatever, cement, I guess. But let's work on little things because the big things are going to be taken care of too, okay? I understand we got fly dumping, we got it over there in Popular Place, looks like the dump. And now, they want to do something about that. And furthermore, I understand I won't get Livingston cut off like the people on Livingston would like because their kids would like to, you know? So I'll have to suffer with that. But Roy, I'm glad you're trying to work to get it together. It took a long time. But don't tear it down because you're getting it started. Tear it up. And I know about diversified, because I took that fireman test that you had to go through and carry the ropes and the hauls and fifty pounds of this and oxygen when I was a little bit younger than what I am now. Well, on the third step, I decided to sit down because I had a hard time getting all up the stop. And I can understand, some young kids can really get up there and do it, and some of them can't. Some of them don't want to run into a fire. Some of them don't want to run into a riot, which I did, or evergreen terrace, like I have three bullets in my house yet. But we got to get the people out, we got to get them going, we have to go and ask, you know, take the kids to the fire stations and let them see what they have to do and what it looks like, you know, how heavy those things are, what you have to learn to do to do this. This is how we learn, teach these kids. And I don't care if they're pink, purple, and got polka dots. Let's give them a chance. Let's give everybody a chance. And I only see three blacks up here, okay? And that is horrifying, okay? And I remember having a colored cop, I can't remember his name, we used to call him Slufoot, but he used to walk downtown, he knew every worker out down there, every storekeeper, every time when they opened up, what they have, and everything. That's what we need. We need the communication, we need it bad. We're going to be stuck in the nineteen twenties and big fur hats and all that stuff, and I'm not ready to wear another hat, okay? And I hope you have a beautiful time on whatever you're trying to do, okay?
I'm here till May.
Oh, you are? Oh, sorry about that.
Everyone keeps wishing me well, it's so nice, but I'm here. I'm here for a while.
And all the, God bless.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
Their motion for chairman?
Second.
All favor?
Thirty-one.
Thank you.
Thirty-one, Joe.